I appreciate everybody coming here. I know it's hard to get off work and run out here, but this is an important election, and most of your people from the Chamber, and I see some citizens as well. This is all about the business. All the questions are going to be about business. I know there's other issues out there, but this is for Lake Anna Chamber of Commerce and it is just for businesses. That's what we're really focusing on here today. I'd like to introduce the two candidates. Mark Albers. Could you stand up, please? Mr. Willie Harper, he's in company. He's already in office. So let's shake hands.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate you guys taking your time coming out here. It's a real benefit for us to see the business, you know, to see the leaders, you know, intermingle with businesses out here. We really appreciate your time. I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew, and Andrew's gonna give us the rules of the debate, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, VD. Once again, we've gone over the board, so let's just go over them one more time. We will ask a question. You will get three minutes from the time I finish the question, each of you. And then, if you want to address an issue that your opponent has said, you will have one minute per bottle each. I think that pretty much is it. When 30 seconds, when you're within 30 seconds of your end speaking time, Bobby will be here, and he will just give you a signal or nod, or he will tap on the chair, or something like that. But once again, thank you so much for taking the time to be here. We'll start with the first question, which I'll ask Mr. Harper. Right after that broad question, what are the two biggest issues facing Louisa County in the next four years?
Well, I think all of us can relate to it personally, as well as in the event of working with the county, and that is your finances. The fiscal situation in the county is going to be crucial to whatever projects we undertake as we go forward. So I think we've been able through the years to maintain a very sound fiscal position in Louisa County, and I'm very proud of the efforts that I've made for that. And I think that's what carried us through this downturn without any drastic measures that we had to take. As you know, surrounding counties all had layoffs. We didn't do that. All had cut back in services. We didn't do any other than the fact that we did it through attrition, or we did it through reorganization. Another issue that's going to be a big player for us, I think, is going to be the infrastructure. We have designated growth areas, but I want to emphasize the fact that the growth area and service area are two different things. And so growth areas can exist without there being service of certain infrastructures such as water and sewage. So they're one of the things that, that's another one of the things I think that we're going to have to work diligently at, come up with approach to it. We want to be managed in that regard. Debt is something that is very detrimental to you in downturn of the county, as many of us just found out. So I think to manage that well, and to not be going over commit ourselves, is going to be very important to us as we move forward. So I would say those items, and a lot of land use, of course, and other things that come through our bailiwick, so to speak, and they're all two things that we really have control over, and that's land use and budget. So they're not two items I think that are going to be much important to us.
Thank you. Mr. Albers, before you go in.
Well, we always, we have a resounding issue throughout the county itself, not just in the Mineral District, but that's to provide our citizens with internet service, high-speed internet service. And I think that's a quite a resounding issue. There's an outcry for that service. The barrier, and the issue, if you want to call it that, is providing it to our folks. We all know that the infrastructure is currently getting in place with the towers that are being built, but the only way to thoroughly spread it throughout this county is to create the towers and the infrastructure and to provide wireless. But there's no way that we're going to get Verizon, or whomever, AT&amp;T, to come in and provide fiber and so on. So the best way we can do that is to provide as a good wireless basis we can. Second issue is water. A little more water, and some more water on top of that. I'm stealing a couple of issues from Mr. Harper, but, you know, carrying water from the James River is a monumental task and an undertaking. To reflect some of the meetings that have happened with the board, you know, things are in place for that to happen, but it hasn't happened yet. We need to make sure that we continue down the path of making sure the suction is located in the proper spot, and making sure that we get it to the county the way it's supposed to be done. There are currently two applications with VDCQ, one to withdraw water from Lake Anna and one from the James River. With the success of the pipeline from the James River, the application to withdraw water from Lake Anna will be withdrawn. So I think, you know, we need to go down that path correctly. Third issue, I know this is on topic two, but one that's important to me is to make sure that we have, make sure we have a very strong educational system in place to make sure that we move forward with providing the tools to our young to make sure that they fill the shoes of when they get older, of getting their jobs and making sure that they can contribute back with the county.
30 seconds.
VD, if you would like to address something the other said, you have one minute?
Well, I can answer a question. One, a couple of areas. With the broadband, last night we got into an agreement with CBA Link to do a more detailed evaluation of the county. As I've said before, that's not going to be a case of waiting a while, and we're going to have broadband everywhere. But it's a start. We've been working on it for a number of years. This is good progression for that effort. With the James River Water Authority, Louisa County Water Authority, County of Fluvan, County of Louisa, all signed the agreement now. That's in place. The only thing left for us to do is for Fluvan to hold their public hearing and adjust their COC plan that will allow us to cross the property there, Fluvan County. And as I said in the beginning, limit mine to two, because the driving factor is going to be your finances. And I think we have to be fans of all the people in Louisa when we start looking at the cost of doing these projects. And, you know, when we look at a budget, we just look at the people asking for it. Sometimes we also need to look at the people who are going to be taking it.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Mr. Albers, do you have anything to say? Okay. The second question, Mr. Albers, you have it for first. What is your position on growth in the county? Should we promote development or restrict development to keep the rural country feel?
So let it not be misunderstood, but I am, I want it to be very clear that I am pro-growth. Positive growth. We need to make sure that businesses in this area are provided incentives to come to this area and to stay in this area. We go out, we attract, we try to attract large business, and sometimes it's successful, sometimes it's not. But positive growth, and we, 15 years or so ago, the, quite a few citizens were put on different boards to make sure that they came up with the right comprehensive plan to, to make sure we just, we did, sorry, defined the proper growth areas. Lake Anna being one of them, Science Crossroads, the interstate exits, and the towns of Louisa and then, so by going out and trying to find those businesses actively and aggressively, that's how we establish our growth.
Mr. Harper?
The short answer is both. I think we can grow, and we can also maintain that role as a part of nature. And we do that by the COC plan, and we do that by zoning. And that's one of the areas, as I said earlier, we don't have a great say in, is your budget and zoning. Once you get passed out, a lot of stuff is dictated to. Just as a quick reference to Virginia operate's under the building rules, it's basically to say, you only have the board supervisors and the local governing body only has the authority specifically given to it by the General Assembly. But as far as the growth versus non-growth goes, I'll tell you a little quick story. Previous sheriff in Louisa County, Henry Cannon, told me when he worked for Walton Wood Lumber in Pendleton, and Mr. Charlie Wood called him in, I won't, I'll cut this sort of short and get to the bottom line, but he had him to do a whole series of exercises. And then when he finished, Henry said he didn't know what Mr. Wood was headed towards, but what Mr. Wood explained to him is that you will either grow, or you will fall behind. You cannot stay the same. So we've had a very managed growth, I think, in Louisa. Over the last couple of decades, we've probably averaged about a 10% a year in our growth. So I think you can have both. I think you can have managed areas. With board growth, we have designated growth areas. We have, as I said earlier, the, I guess, I won't say a percentage, but a large percentage of Louisa County does actually still have agriculture and forestry. And we do have land use in place that encourages that kind of continued use. But so I think absolutely we can have both of that.
Okay. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Albers? All right, Mr. Harper, this next question will be again for you. How is Mineral different from other districts, and what do you need to do to represent the unique needs of the people?
Well, that's an interesting question, and a good question for the Mineral District more so than any other district in Louisa County. Mineral stretches all the way from Lake Anna to basically Interstate 64. And you'll find on the Lake Anna side of the district, we have a little more dense population. We have people who moved here, people who have desires for different types of services, different from those that are going to live in the more rural area towards the 64 end. That's not to say we don't have new folks on the 64 side. We do. And those folks, of course, are looking for things that we've mentioned here, the broadband and so forth. So it's a very varied district as you move across it. And so that calls as a great deal of effort, if you will, to try to represent all elements of the district, if you will, the Yanceville District and the Mineral District. So I think it differs mostly in that way from the other districts in the county. We started off with five, then we moved to six, and then we moved to seven. When I first went on the board, it was six districts, and of course, we ended up, they ended up tie, 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 and we ended up with a court point tiebreaker. It got so much of a problem, if you will. So then we went to a seventh district, and what those did basically was break up the other districts that reached across the whole width of the county. So Mineral's the only one left that has that kind of variety in terms of its citizens.
Well, to expand on Mr. Harper's answer just a little bit, demographically, you've got waterfront property, a Lake Anna area, you've got a township, and then you have the rural expansion there. But those are demographics. Those are just separate areas. What it boils down to is people, whether they're in Mineral, or whether they're in Louisa, or whether they're in Kukui, or so on, people are basically the same and want basically the same things. And that's what is good for their family and at their home. So while the graphics are a little bit different, the needs are still the same. And regardless of how you approach things, you have to approach them for what's best for the family.
Next question, Mr. Albers, is for you again. And you, we're talking about business incentives. This next question kind of addresses that. What is needed to promote business developments in Louisa County?
Well, you need to be aggressive. You can't sit back and wait on a business to come to Louisa and tell you all the great things that a business has. To give credit where it's due, Andy Wade has done a great job. Andy Wade's come to my plant, and we've talked on business opportunities through my company with the county, and he's done a great job of representing the county very well. The only thing I would add is the incentives that you need to provide. You need to provide incentives that are equal to both the large business for the tax revenue, and you need to provide the incentive for the small businesses around Lake Anna and throughout the county. The small businesses are the niche of the county. Where the large businesses, like my company, and like, you know, the one down the road here, they provide a, you know, our lifestyle, our basic needs and our basic services. But when the small businesses are struggling to provide, you know, meals for their families, then you need to make sure that they stay within the county also. And you need to reach out to them and make sure that they're satisfied.
Thank you. Mr. Harper?
Yes. Louisa County is really, currently looking at a program to help small business in the county. These are existing buildings of businesses, if you will. We also have some opportunities from time to time to work with different companies in terms of tax structures and so forth. And recently, we've looked at the possibility of abating some taxes over a period of time in an effort to recruit people. And as alluded to earlier by Mr. Albers, we do have an economic development department that's been working. But when it all boils down, a lot of companies are going to do their own work in terms of what they are looking for. And workforce is going to be a vital element in that consideration. And it doesn't matter how many incentives you give. If you can't get the right workforce, then they know it's not going to be a successful business. So we're working with the school systems. The new high school is going to have a CTE program in it for more vocational training. We think that that's an element that we've been missing through the years, that kind of training. We've got some other programs that are working. We're working with a recent program that when folks are coming out of prison, so to speak, are going to get an effort to, opportunity to make some effort with them to try to get them acclimated towards the workforce again. And again, we have a small business incentive program that should roll out in January, as we're looking at it right now. As each industry comes in, they have their own demands, they have their own desires, and we have to work with each one independently. It's no one-size-fits-all solution for all industries and so forth. So through the years, we've had the opportunity to work with a number of companies. We just had a big company that we lost to Mississippi. And we lost it basically based on the fact that they had more money to throw at it. And the state gave them a great deal more help than we got from the Commonwealth. The Commonwealth, even with what they had available to them, would not have done enough to match what Mississippi has down there. So I think one of the big elements is going to be workforce training. And then, of course, each individual company will be weighed independently as they come forward.
Actually, I remember one. Go ahead.
This is actually the one point so far that I disagree with Mr. Harper. As a manager of a plant in a large business association of this county, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Harper that businesses have it forethought out. Businesses want what's best for the business. And a county selling itself is only going to promote that business coming to that county. There's no incentive whatsoever for a business out of area to come to Virginia, to come to Louisa, Virginia, if they don't know about it, regardless of the tax incentives in place or so on. If you don't have somebody out there promoting Louisa County as a complete package, the lake, the farmland, the soon-to-be newly constructed schools, then businesses aren't going to, I disagree. I don't think businesses will come to the county.
Mr. Harper, would you like to say that?
Well, I'm not sure I fully follow your position there. I do know you have to go out and you have to market yourself. That's what economic development does, it markets Louisa County, it will. But my points are that even though you're marketing, you also have to have these elements that are necessary for business to survive and to prosper. So I'm not sure I'm following what you're saying. We do have economic development director. We do go out, we do recruit. I'll say this to you, before we had an economic development director, we had a group of people that were upon it, the IDA. They still in existence. They can work with that, help with that, if you want to. Most of the businesses located within the industrial park were put there before we had a paid economic development position. So we have to work with that group right now, and we're trying to. We met with them last week. We're trying to put it all together to get everybody on the same page to recruit. It's paramount that you maintain good contacts with the Commonwealth of Virginia and their economic development. That's where you're going to get your contacts. They recognize Virginia. They can then funnel to us.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. This next question goes from attracting businesses, talking about businesses that are currently in the area. Many businesses lately have complained that Louisa County has made it difficult for them to do anything. What supervisor would you do to alleviate that difficulty? Mr. Harper?
Well, frankly, I hear some of the other side of that, too. I hear a lot of folks who say Louisa's very easy to do business in, when you compare it to some surrounding counties. So without specifics, it's difficult to address it. I will say, however, that we have a new community development director coming on board now, and the board supervisors has emphasized to them that we want renewed effort in customer service. If you are unable to meet or unwilling to meet the requirements, then obviously you're going to have some problems, I would say. But frankly, I'm, specifics, I don't know how you would address that, other than to say that I'm hearing some of the opposite statements being made. I do get complaints from time to time, and when they're levied, then we go to the county administrator, sit down with him, and have him take a look at it, see if there's any merit to it and so forth. But without specifics, how I can address it.
In talking with some of the people that I've talked with, small business owners, I guess the best way I can describe it as saying is, why are we throwing money at these huge businesses when I've got my business right here, and I'm trying to make a living, and I'm trying to do what I can for the people in this area? So I kind of iterated it in the last statement, but with the incentives, you can't forget the small guy. And the ability to listen to a guy with four kids and a wife, and struggling to make ends meet with his business, and another company comes in and starts stealing his customers away, that hits pretty hard home with me on a personal level, because I've been to the dark side where I was wondering where I was going to put meals on my family's table. And I personally don't ever want it to happen again. So you just, the ability to have the relationship with all business members of the community is paramount, large and small. They all deserve an equal stock, equal position at the table when it comes to negotiations and keeping people here.
And on to the next question.
Well, again, what I mentioned earlier, that is the fact that I believe starting in January, we do have a small business assistance program that we're looking at putting in place. The presentation was made by Economic Development several months ago. Some questions were asked, an update was done, and it's been presented again to us. So we do have an F1 out there with small businesses to look at them. It's always been an emphasis of ours to work with small businesses. But I also want to say that competition is what makes us better. We cannot control, we don't control who comes and who leaves. That's decisions that they make on their own. They have business decisions that the county government or any government really can get involved in.
Mr. Albers, do you have anything to throw to the public?
Thank you.
Okay. The next question, this is for you, Mr. Albers. What are the issues currently facing Louisa County's water and sewage programs? What should be the priorities for improvement?
Well, current issues are public perception, I guess, if you will. That's one of the largest things that I've heard and seen is what is needed to placate the public in terms of how we get rid of our waste. There is no, this is probably, after speaking with several folks, it's probably one of the most complicated questions that's been presented to me. And there is no easy answer, and there is no answer that's going to satisfy everybody. And I'm not just saying the vote for me answered on that. This is one, literally quite one of the most complicated topics I've come across. When you've got people, other counties that want your water, when you've got a perception that raw sewage is being pumped into Lake Anna, when you've got the perception that developments are only out there to make a buck, there is no easy answer. The best answer I can give at this point is you do what is cost-effective and what serves the community as a whole. As a community grows in terms of developments and in terms of businesses, and growth will happen. There's, that's, you know, that's going to happen. Growth is going to happen, and there is going to be change. But the only way that you move forward with that is to just balance it as best you can with public perception, with funding, and with what the business requirements are.
Mr. Harper, before you go?
Thank you. Basically, I think you can simply say that water is the future. Without water, there's not much going to happen. We know that. We saw that back in, oh, I guess in the early 80s when we built Northeast Creek to Central Florida County. We then went out and expanded out into what we've done called growth area in the western end, which is on its crossroads. We started out with wells, but we knew all along that wells are not the long-term answer for water. We have been negotiating for quite some time, and now I think that we're close to being completed, the efforts with the James River water coming into Louisa County. Louisa's in a difficult situation, and it has no large body of water within it to draw off of. So we took a real effort with Fluvan County, and we're very fortunate that Fluvan was willing to work with us, and we're very thankful that Fluvan is fully working with us in that regard. So I think that water, one of the issues right now with the early system that we built is that we need customers. So we've got to find some new customers to go to the operating house. And we built the waste treatment facility in Science Crossroads that the requirements were quite different than they are today. In order to expand that, to take care of what growth we've had in Science Crossroads today and get ready for the future growth, the parameters have changed altogether now to discharge as the effluent. And so now we're spending five to eight million dollars at some point to get from what has always been the discharge now at the waste treatment facility to the South Anna River, where we can discharge it into a larger body of water. So there are alternatives that we can look at. There's a development occurring right now on Lake Anna that they're using a good system. There are alternatives to look at. But I think that water is absolutely the future, and I think that we are going to have to move the water lines out. We're going to have some more customers to pay for the day-to-day operation.
Yes, I'll just, just a quick, in total agreement with Mr. Harper, the only thing I would say is the diligence that's required in terms of, we don't have the water yet. Fluvan has already renewed one time. Do I think it's going to happen? Do I think everything's moving forward? Absolutely. From everything I've read, everything I've seen, everything I've heard, everything is moving forward. It hasn't happened yet. So I just think we need to be a little more vigilant in making sure everything is the way it's supposed to be.
Mr. Harper, would you like to go as well?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. The next question, we'll start with you. The mineral earthquake obviously caused a, quite an undertaking destruction with the new schools. Give us your plans for those schools in the next four years.
Well, the board supervisors, the plan can be very simple. We set the funding. Everything else lies with the school board. And I don't mean to make it that simple. It really isn't. Because I would say to you, over the last several years, the working relationship between the two boards, the school board and the board supervisors, has been elevated tremendously. We've worked together, and let me say that everyone, from the teacher to the support workers, to the support services, the superintendent, all the administration within the school system did a great job of getting us back in school. We could have lost a full year of school, and we didn't do it. We managed to recover and get temporary facilities put in and to continue that year. The most disappointing part of all of it at this point is going to be that one class who went completely through the high school without being in a permanent building. And nothing we can do about that. We are under contract to do both schools now, the elementary school at Thomas Jefferson, and also the high school. Now the high school completion date is going to be Fall 15. So that's the only disappointing part I have, other than the fact that we had to do it start with, that we incurred those damages, is that one class will not have a permanent building to have in their high school career. Again, the relationship between the school board and the board supervisors is basically we fund it. They come to us with a request. We cannot approve by line item. We can only approve by category. And frankly, if you can only approve by category, you may as well approve by bottom line, because the categories are so put together, so to speak, that you can't really address things independently. And so the funding side of it is outbeat side, but I'm very pleased with the working relationship that Louisa has established with the school, and how well that's gone for us.
Mr. Albers?
Well, for anybody that knows me, this is something I am like crazy passionate about. My son, who's a junior at the high school, is one of that class that's not going to see a high school. And that has affected morale on quite a large scale. And I see it with, I do quite a bit with the school, and I see it on a personal level. You know, the kids, you know... You know, the kids, you know, for the most part, they couldn't care less about this, about everything. But, but the one thing that I have noticed is there's a lack of morale in terms of, it's hard to get hyped up about going to a school in a pod. They miss going to having a school that they represent. Representing the school name, absolutely, they're all about that. But there's something solid about representing their school. And that's something that, I'm sorry to say, you know, it's not to be for that particular class. Other than that, moving forward with what I think is important with the school system, I agree, the board has, it's great, the relationship that they do have. You see the board and the school board working together to provide good school systems. I think we should expand it though. I'd like to work with the school board about utilizing STEM program, the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics program. The purpose and the basis of the STEM program is to break down the barrier that lies in between the school, classroom, and the CTE program. And for example, the CTE being the hands-on part of skills-based part of it. And obviously, the classroom is their knowledge base. But if a child who has knowledge base doesn't have the physical skills of how to do a particular job, what you read don't necessarily get you to the other side, to lay it down as simple as I can. And vice versa. If you've got the skills, the hands-on skills, but you don't know how to communicate with somebody that has a PhD in neuroscience, then they're just as broken down on that side of it. We need to be able to provide that crossover where when a kid graduates school to go mow grass, he needs to be able to speak Spanish with the crew that is doing the primary basis of the work. That's what I foresee. Are you getting points for that, Spanish teacher?
Mr. Harper?
I wanna wait for the answer there. I remember when he wasn't proud of two of his children. That says, you know, we do indeed work well with the school board. STEM is certainly something that's on the table, we talk about on a regular basis. I would say however, that again, those programs lie totally within the school board's area of responsibility. If they come to us for the funding, then we're responsible for the funding side of it. And certainly, we work with them and encourage them along these areas. And I think the science and technology are big areas out there and I think we have a team that travels around some, didn't get to go as much as I thought they should've been able to go. With technology, but we encourage as much of that as we can. The STEM program is a great program. It does fit within their responsibility, if you will, if they come back again, basically what we do is the funding.
Mr. Harper?
And just to expand on that just a little bit. They do come to the board for the budget, but you have to be, as the mineral district, with two of your schools being in that district, probably obvious, well, excuse me, three, being in that particular district, which is another unique mineral district thing, you have to be willing to have that open line of communication with individual school board members, with individual administrative people. You have to have a knowledge base for what they're requesting. And that's something that I feel strongly about.
All right, moving on to the next question. What attributes does a county supervisor need to be successful? How do you fit that role? What are some examples of you utilizing those characteristics? Mr. Harper?
As alluded to earlier, I'm a manager of a power plant. I deal in Louisiana County. I deal with these issues on quite a regular basis. I've been in this, the power industry, for twenty years and I've been a manager for ten years. So, day-to-day activities of business evolution is one of the things that, it's what I do. I've got a wife that's a teacher in the school system. I've got three kids in the school system. That's near and dear to my heart, quite obviously. But I know what it's gonna take to work with the school board. I'm very involved in the community. Anybody that knows me knows that I deal with Little League, Louisiana Little League. That, you know, that in itself qualifies me to do it, but if anybody's had a kid in our local baseball, they know that the Little League is a microcosm of Louisiana County itself. You deal with literally every issue there is to deal with on a community basis. You deal with rich, you deal with poor, you deal with half, you deal with half-nuts. And you deal with the parents. God forbid you don't let that baby play on the baseball field, 'cause you're gonna get a call. All right? So, I know how to deal with the people. But the one thing that kind of strikes me as the most important attribute and something that I feel, I'm not a person that tells me, so tells myself, so it's difficult to say how great I am. But, but one of the things that I have that I'm very good at is I'm good at relating to people and listening to them. Anybody that has, you know, has a little heartburn, willing to listen to that person, deal with that person and talk it out and to do what I need to do to make the situation better. It might not be to their liking, but I will make the situation better.
Well, certainly, one of the biggest things you're gonna have to do is be able to take in a lot of data and sift through it and then be able to make decisions based on that information you have. A lot of the decisions we make are based on the information you get. So, it's imperative that you be able to decipher that information as well as seek out additional information when not sufficient amount is being provided to you. It also requires, I think at times, some strength to stand on issues that frankly, the picture in front of you is not there. We may, is one of the, I'll tell you one of the stories that was told to me about how you get something bad at board supervisors and that is you just fill the front row with people who want it and that's all it takes. Well, you know, that may be fifteen, twenty people, but there are thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand people in Louisiana County. So, the ability to, I think, take into account all the citizens of Louisiana when you make your decisions is very important to you. And I do, you know, all my life, I've lived in Louisiana all my life. My three sons went to school in Louisiana. One of them is a teacher in Louisiana right now. So, one of them is a deputy sheriff in Louisiana and one's self-employed in business for himself in Louisiana. So, I have a lot of ties to Louisiana and I have this, if you will, desire to listen to what's going on around too. I get it from the school system, I hear it from sheriff's office, I can hear it from the private business out here, if you will. And certainly, people are free to call or drive up my driveway anytime they want to and talk with me about issues. And I don't think, I don't recall in any instance where I've ever not returned phone calls and I can tell you sometimes that's not pleasant. Sometimes you know what you're gonna get when you return that phone call. But it's important to do that because they have a right to voice their positions as well. One of the earliest positions that, when I first went on the board, was the old hospital building. I don't know how many people here know that, that was a hospital building where an house, alcohol office is. That was a four-place hospital. It lost its accreditation, it went somewhat disrepair and a lot of people have a lot of ties to that building and they wanted it to be a hospital, you know, but it just didn't function anymore. The building didn't meet all the ADA requirements and a number of other things. So, we rehabbed it and put it in the hands of a separate group who now continue to manage that and come back to the county, did not come back to the county for any monies. So, we were able to move that, but a few folks in town did not want that to happen. They were good people, people I knew well and they were very strong in their opinion. But sometimes you just have to stay on what you believe is right for the county and since all that has turned out to be a good move, so.
Mr. Harper, do you have anything to add? Mr. Harper, anything to add?
Nope.
Okay. The next question. What are the strengths and weaknesses of the current board? How would you make their strengths even better and how would you fix the weaknesses?
I'll be here, I'll be first. That's a tough one. You know, I don't see any board made up of seven people, a disagreement's on it. But our board has been able through the years to have this disagreement and yet come back to the table at the next meeting or the next issue and be able to address it without animosity towards one another. And sometimes our differences are very strong. And principally, budget is one of those that will add that kind of strength to it. We're gonna have a lot of variations in it. As I put it before on budget, you know, you fight the battles independently and then when it rolls over, you're outside one. You know, it's not your position then to go try to derail all that thing. It's your position at that point to go ahead and try to make it work and manage what's before. Our strength, I think that's our strength really, is that we're able to have a great deal of diversity on that board and then be able to come back and consider a lot of issues independently of those differences. And I would say to you that probably eighty-five percent of what we do is ball flake. It just rolls right on through, there's very little differences on it. But when you get down to one and have a difference, it can be very heated and it's important that I think that we're able to maintain the ability to then move on to the next issue and not pull that issue across, so to speak. I really don't know of any areas that I think that we are very weak in. Personally, if you ask me personally, I would say we're not strong enough in terms of our budget processes, but, you know, I'm just one of seven in that respect. So, we put the best effort we have and can afford it. And if we're outvoting, we're outvoting, so we move ahead with that. I think there's a lot of strength in that board and in its diversity, different backgrounds, different trainings, if you will, and different interests. So, I think that's a big strength there. I can't find one particular weakness that I want to zero in on, but after Mr. Harper's speech, I have one.
Mr. Harper, take it away.
With all respect to Mr. Harper, he's the chairman of the board right at the moment and the board of supervisors, they have done a commendable job of doing what's right for this county and doing what is needed to move this county forward. The only thing I really have to say about this entity is that change is good. Change is change. The thing about a board supervisors that have been together so long is that they know how each other's gonna think. So, an idea might not get presented that, you know, I'd really like to talk about that, but it might not happen because, you know what? I've got six other guys that aren't very interested in it. Change is a good thing. When you have a little bit of turnover, it presents new ideas, it presents new perspectives, okay? We're always, at my point, we're always trying to incorporate initiatives to reduce complacency, to reduce relaxation. You don't wanna relax. When you've had that feeling of relaxation is when it comes and gets you. That's when something comes and gets you, is when you're so relaxed that you're not alert enough to see what's happening. We're moving, we're moving in directions that I think are good. But when you're relaxed to the point that you know how each other's gonna think, you've got a tendency to veer a little bit. So, change is good. A little bit of turnover, a little bit of new ideas, a little fresh action presents a good thing for a lower community.
Harper, you're not jumping right up and out there.
Well, I have to change, but such change, I don't think is a positive. I disagree that there's complacency. You know, there's seven people that constantly have seven different perspectives on things often that they're throwing on the table. And it's not just all their ideas. Oftentimes, things come to us from outside and they're the issues that we're dealing with more so than what we may put on the table. Now, there are the continuing issues that we do work with, the water, as we said earlier, then the wastewater, those areas, they're day-in and day-out type considerations that we have to do. There's plenty of outside information provided with those as well. And we have a lot of agencies available to us that we go to and pick up on the latest and greatest given areas and so forth. So, I disagree that there's complacency there. I think there's enough activity going on on a regular basis on different sources that keep us pretty much alert to it.
You have a shot? Okay, final question. Why do you think you're the best answer to the job? Straightforward and simple?
Only is it though. Go me. Well, it's not really what I think, why I'm the best person. It's how you guys feel. You know, you can, there's body English, there's way of perceiving conversations, there's way of looking at somebody and knowing if they're serious or not. That's for you guys to decide. I can tell you, I take this very seriously, just from a personal perspective. I was born and raised here, just like Mr. Harper. Louisiana County is exceptionally dear to my heart. I want this county to be successful. I want farmland to have their farmland to do what they wanna do. I want small businesses to be able to succeed. I want large businesses to come into this area so that we can grow. That's what I want. That's why I, it's dear to me. That's why I'm willing to listen to as many people as I can listen to and try and get that point across.
Well, at the risk of adding some emphasis to Mr. Harper's assertion earlier that you should have turnover, I've been on board for twenty-six years. And I would stand on my twenty-six-year record. I don't hide any of it. I think all of it is right out there for you to look at if you want to. We've had growth in the county, we've had small businesses come to the county, we've had large businesses come to the county. We've made our efforts at the recruitment, but I too have had tremendous amount of involvement in the county. I've worked with the rescue squad. President of the CaliWire Rescue Association. I've been the president of the Mineral Voluntary Fire Department. I'm a like member of the Mineral Voluntary Fire Department. So, I've been involved in a lot of the grassroots efforts in the county as well as the board supervisors and many, many different organizations. And I've been able to work with Virginia Association of Counties, doing some of their training in Richmond and had an opportunity to do some of that some years back when I served with the Baco Finance Committee. So, I've had a lot of involvement in the county, I've seen a lot of what goes on in county government. I've been a part of the volunteer efforts out here in the county, been part of all boards. In fact, I was on board when the first water system was put into Louisiana County, not the two towns, but Louisiana County and that was Northeast Creek. So, I've been part of a lot of the growth processes that have taken place in Louisiana. I think we've done it in a very managed way. I think we've done it in a way that's not put excess burdens on taxpayers of Louisiana. And I, again, I simply stand on my record of twenty-six years as being a good indicator, I think, of how to be going forward.
Well, that reaches the end of our discussion. I would personally thank both of you for taking your time and if you could, just give a round of applause.
I just wanna tell everybody, thanks for coming, really appreciate this. This is our first debate, so I'm not really good at it, but I, obviously, the candidates were very well spoken and these, both these gentlemen are trying to get a job that nobody really wants. I mean, it's a job that demands a lot of your time. You get people like me calling and yelling at you all the time, "I can't believe this is this way." So, I mean, they're really giving an effort and it's their sense of responsibility for their love of the county to run for this job anyway. And I'd like to say thank you to both of you personally for even being in this position. I really do, that's really heartfelt. And again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Bobby, thanks for talking. Andrew, thank you for the moderating. Clay, Keanu TV, thank you for showing up and doing your thing. And all of your guests, we really appreciate it. And thanks.